Roll call please Christina Clark.
David Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parsons.
President.
Mayor Lundberg.
All right, we've got a quorum. Mayor Lundberg is at a school board meeting tonight. He may be able to join us later, so I will run the meeting as the president. Could I get an approval of the agenda, please? Any changes?
No.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Right. Minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the June 27 briefing, July 1 regular. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, moving on to claims. Any question on claims on page 29? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Right, consent calendar.
Don't have any.
Okay, all right. So now it is time for visitors and timed items. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward. Hit the microphone. State your name and address.
Good evening. Lisa Marso, 1325 Parkview Place here in Brandon. I just visited with the chief about an idea that I saw in my sister's community, and the police department is supportive of it, so I just wanted to mention it to you, and if you're supportive of it, I will pursue funding for it. The program that they have in my sister's town in Roseau, Minnesota, that is funded, I think, by State Farm, is if a police officer sees a child with a helmet, the police officer may stop and give the child a gift certificate for a free ice cream cone. And it really did cause a bunch of kids to wear their helmets, and I just thought it was a really good program. So if that's something that you're supportive of, I'll pursue that as a private citizen and trying to see if we can get some funding for that. So the chief also mentioned maybe handing out the certificates if they see good bike safety as well, and so maybe expanding a little bit. But that was something that I wanted to visit with the chief about when I got back from my sabbatical, which thank you for allowing me to have that opportunity. So if anybody has any concerns about me pursuing it, I won't, but if it's something that the council would support, then I will.
I'm in favor. If we wear helmets, do we get?
You know, that's something the police department maybe will allow them to consider, but right now, I was just gonna see if we could get funding for the ice cream cones for kids.
I would just support it too, and please hit me up for funding.
Thank you.
Okay, other for visitors and timed items? Hi Trudy.
Now is it?
Now you're up.
Okay. Trudy Papka, 1609 South Dolly Drive, and I'm here to, in representation of the Water Conservation Committee. I handed out to everyone a listing of several items. First of all, I'll go through the accomplishments for 2019. Our committee, along with City Hall, who has been involved, implemented the Water Smarter Incentive Program to promote outdoor watering conservation. By doing that, we offered weather-based irrigation controllers, programmable irrigation timers, rain sensors, and rain barrels. We also participated in the Loyalty Day Parade this year, along with the Intermediate School, who was very helpful. We completed a raffle for three rain barrels that were painted by the Intermediate School art class. That's why they were involved with our parade. They handed out candy and ran out midway, I'm sure, but they had a good time. We also completed a raffle for, excuse me, we also created Water Smarter Yard signs and street signs. The street signs are not up yet, to my knowledge, but we have handed out many of the yard signs, and you'll see them in the parks and in yards across the city. We also increased public education efforts by publishing newspaper article. We sent two inserts in the city utility bills, and we sent water restriction guideline magnets to all the utility customers in the city. As far as a recap of the 2019 water conservation budget, to date, we have $5,000 budgeted for miscellaneous items, other than the rebates. So we have $1,547 left. We've spent $3,453. And of our $15,000 budgeted for rebates to customers, we've paid out, the City Hall has paid out $2962, and that leaves quite a bit. $12,038 still remaining, but the summer's not over. And City Hall has issued 31 rain barrel rebates, eight rain sensor rebates, six controller rebates, and five irrigation timer rebates, so far. Now for 2020, this is what we're requesting. Our plan going forward is to spend approximately $2,800 for the utility bill insert mailings, and that would be four mailings at approximately $700 per mailing. $1,500 for rain gauges, that would be 500 of them at approximately $3 a unit. $200 for candy for the Loyalty Day Parade. $1,000 for additional promotional materials for raffle items and any added projects, just to keep things fresh. We wanna kinda keep the momentum going, too. And then $500 for water conservation program supplies and materials, such as markers, paper, envelopes, decorations, flags, whatever is needed for our added projects. So for 2020, our conservation budget request is for $6,000, which is $1,000 more than we were awarded last year. Moving on then to the 2020 Water Smarter Incentive Program, this is for the rebates. We want to continue funding for the weather-based irrigation controllers, the irrigation timers, the rain sensors, and the barrels. And for 2020, we are asking for $15,000, which is the same amount. And we know, I mean, granted, there's a lot of money left in there right now. We know we're going to lose that money, but if you turn around and put that money right back in, let's say we have $10,000 left over, all the city would have to come up with is another five to make the 15. Any question? Concerns?
How do you feel? Do you feel like we're making some progress, Trudy, in getting the word out?
Oh, I think we're getting the word out, yeah. I think that it's making a difference. Just, I could see a difference between last year's parade and this year's parade with the amount of involvement, just with having the kids involved. And I think that we need to keep that momentum going, not necessarily the same kind of a thing for next year, but finding a different avenue to get younger people, or not even the young kids. It can be just any other group whatsoever. Any suggestions would be welcome. We are just not sure, but I do think we need to keep it fresh. We can't just keep doing the same things over and over again. We need to come up with something new. What? I don't know yet. But yes, I do think, I think we're making a difference. And if I could be so bold as to say, I think that we could even try to go with internal household conservation. I don't know if anyone saw on Brandon Ask and Tell, but there was talk of the Sioux Falls distributing refunds for, rebates for new toilets, and that came out on Brandon Ask and Tell. And I'm thinking, you know, that, what could that hurt, especially with the core area where the older homes only still have those older toilets in there that are kinda water wasters. But that's something for, not necessarily this year, but down the road. I just think we need to keep that in mind, too.
So moved.
Well, we wanna thank you for all the work your committee does. You guys are all volunteers, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Put a lot of time and thought and effort, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? Okay, moving right along then. We're going to have a public hearing for the Paisley Pod.
Have we received any comments from anybody?
No, we have not. And everything checked out with the police department. So it's a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine license. Planning and zoning has a public hearing Thursday on the conditional use portion. You can't have a liquid license in town of any type without a conditional use. So if you want to approve this, recommendation is to approve a contention upon the conditional use being granted.
I would go ahead and we make a motion to approve this request, contention upon approval from P&amp;Z on the conditional use app.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so it will move on to P&amp;Z then?
Correct.
All right, moving on to old business, committee reports, golf course.
The roof has been replaced out at the clubhouse. Again, I wanna thank Zane for his persistence on following up on this, because it was able to be put on there at no cost to the city except for...
$1,000 deductible.
Deductible. So he'd been working on that since last year. They had a very successful tournament out there this last week with the state tournament out there, men and women, so got a lot of good compliments on the course. That's it?
So we have to go through and do the wage adjustments?
Correct. Reese Bannon Top is moving from the community room to maintenance, and Lucas Schubert is moving from the pro shop to the lounge.
Can we do those in one motion?
Sure.
Move to approve both of these requests, adjustments.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to do wage adjustments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, moving on. We've got the work report from Park and Rec. Page 30. I think that's the right page. Please, anything?
Sunrise Park. Their contractor's going to be out there working on it tomorrow, so that'll probably be out of commission for a while.
And doing what?
We are replacing the sand surfacing with the turf surfacing. I don't.
Weather dependent?
Very weather dependent.
It's probably gonna melt. Good. Giving that a try in one of the parks to see how it holds up. Okay, so we have the work report. Anything? Devin's not here. Moving on to the police report. And the fireworks report.
So everybody got the report that we put out. It detailed from the 1st of July through the 6th of July on all the shifts, and then it had 2018 on the same timeframe, just for comparison. You can see the complaints were less than half of last year, so we were all happy and surprised at how well it went this year. Nothing specific or nothing out of the ordinary, so...
And we only issued warnings?
The, yeah, the warnings are, you know, a lot of times, they'll get called to an area, or they'll themselves see fireworks go off in an area, but by the time they get there, there's nobody around, or they can't identify who was doing it. So they use that to educate the people in the area, let them know about the ordinance, anybody they see outside. So those go down as warnings, so they're not necessarily offenders getting warnings. It's a verbal warning was given to anyone in the area.
Did they get much, what was the feedback like to the officers? Was it okay?
Yeah, it was, you know, last year was, we handed out quite a few citations last year. We had a lot more complaints last year. So we would get a lot of complaints from citizens when we would show up and enforce the rules and the regulations. But this year, it was, I'm not aware of any situations that were, you know, people were upset disorderly or anything like that. Of course, we didn't have any citations out this year, so that helps. But I think most people, you know, knew what was going on, knew the new ordinance, and, I mean, you could tell if you were in town, it was...
Yeah.
A lot different than last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so most people complied, and, I mean, there were a few things here and there, but it wasn't anything out of the ordinary. So hopefully, everybody had a peaceful night's sleep that night. But even if you look to the, you know, the days before, on the first, July 1 in 2018, we wrote eight citations. So, you know, but when they were legal, everyone was buying them, and then when they buy them, it's, nobody wants to wait, so people start shooting them off early, and you run into a lot more of that, too. So overall, I think it went very well.
How do you think Sioux Falls handled it this year? Were they stricter than they were last year? Do you know?
Um, it's very hard to tell. They get a lot of complaints. I know they did hand out a handful of citations, and they bring on, I believe they had four extra officers out just for that, but, I mean, they'll get volume of complaints continuously. So, and it's hard for them, too, because obviously, they're running all over town trying to track them down, too, so. But it seemed, I was over there a little bit during that timeframe, and there was a lot of fireworks going off over there. It seemed, you know, here they, with the new ordinance, everybody was more compliant, I think, than they had in Sioux Falls, but I can't say that with any certainty. It's just kinda my impression that I got.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Heard a lot of positive feedback, and I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Jane.
Yep.
All right. We have some wage adjustments under public safety.
Correct. Officer Anthony Lingan and Officer Zach Hagstrom.
Motion to approve the two wage adjustments?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve wage adjustments. Any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, moving on. I understand we have a change on the Brandon Development Foundation agreement.
Yep, handed out the one page with signatures on the second page, document drafted by the city attorney now that she's back on duty, which is the agreement where we retain Dennis Olson as the development director, who will also do work for the Brandon Development Foundation.
I like the other one just fine.
The one in the council packet?
Yeah.
It wasn't as pretty.
I have no signatures.
You have those.
Yeah, draw a line and sign it.
You know, the one thing that I wanted to take out of that one is to make it very clear that the city is the one who directs all duties, and what was in the council packet has duties as assigned by the Development Foundation. He's our employee. We need to assign the duties. We can certainly ask them if there's anything or get input, but I think we need to assign the duties to our employees.
Okay. So what, we need a motion for that?
Correct.
I would move that we approve this effective immediately and do our best to attempt to get the signatures done tomorrow. And then I would say, Lisa, that we've updated our bylaws for the Development Foundation. We've reflected the same things in those.
Good pardon?
We've reflected the same thing in those, that that board doesn't direct this person.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to adopt an agreement between the City of Brandon and the Development Foundation. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Wage adjustment.
City Engineer Jansma, your anniversary date is up, or coming up, anyway. So wage adjustment is in the packet. I would move to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjust Tammy's wages on her one-year anniversary. Discussion? Can't believe it's a year already. What do you think, Tammy? Yeah? Went fast?
Been a pretty busy year.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna change either. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we're happy to have ya. Okay, the TIF?
Correct. Development agreement between Brandon Development Foundation and the City of Brandon for TIF number four, the Royal Valley Industrial Park.
Need a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for the TIF, number four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? And we have a sales tax resolution, series 2019B, for $6.5 million.
Yep, this is for the Holly Main Project. Nobody wants to borrow six and a half million?
Motion?
I'll make that one. It's been a while since I've spent the...
Step out. Okay, stepping out, okay. Give me a second.
Second.
Come on, people. Work with me here. All right, motion and a second on series 2019B. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, then there's a series 2019C for 2 million, same thing.
This is for the Brandon Park project that is currently underway.
Need a motion for that, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I'm assuming no one wants to discuss this lengthy thing, so I'm just gonna keep moving. Okay, that's administration under streets. We have the work report. We have a wage adjustment for Brad Top.
Correct.
Need a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Brad, Brad, excuse me, Brad Top. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Core area scope and fees. What do we need to do with that, Brian?
If you're comfortable, Tammy and I talked, I don't wanna speak for her, but she is comfortable with the scope and the duties that are outlined in the proposal. There's also a timeline in there. So the next step would be to approve the scope, and then we will have a contract ready for the council to consider at the next council meeting. It's already been shipped over to the city attorney's office for review.
I thought we were getting rid of that spreadsheet.
I see it's still here. Kinda messes up the whole thing, doesn't it?
I wanna make clear that this, if you approve the scope and the fees, we still need the contract, because there are things that they're obligated to do, and so even if you approve the scope and fees, it's still subject to making sure we have a signed contract by both parties that are approved by you at a later meeting.
But didn't I see in that scope, they wanted to get started, like, sooner rather than later? Is that gonna work, even though we don't have the signed contract?
Yeah, I mean, if something falls through, then we don't have the contract to go back on, I'm sure we'd get it worked out, but we just, it came in on Friday, so our office couldn't take a look at it and get it done. It's a pretty lengthy agreement.
And we are still comfortable with the current, we're comfortable with the scope and proceeding just with the approval of this. They've got a ton, HDR has a lot of work to do in the core area to get rolling.
Yeah.
So every week or two is fairly important.
Yeah, that was something we discussed in our proposal that we put together. It was pretty clear, based on the schedule that we had directed for us. Paul Santa with HDR, thank you. That it was fairly aggressive. So the schedule in the RFP that was written, we took a really close look at that and backed it in from an actual bid date in February or March of next year. And so setting up the preliminary design and making sure that we're getting the public input, allowing time for two public meetings, making sure that we're communicating the, just the size of the project in general, it's pretty clear based on the magnitude of that. And just to put it in perspective, it was something that we had included in our proposal. The Sylvan Circle area was approximately 9,000 lineal feet of street done in nine phases. The core area is about four times that size, and we're proposing to do it in about half the time that we did the Sylvan Circle project. And so the preliminary design is what you see for scope and fee right now. That gets us through December. And then there will also be a Phase One design contract for a project in 2020, which we'll have at the next meeting as well. And so the schedule, like Brian said, it was pretty clear that we, today's date was on our schedule to have, and like Lisa said, we just got it on Friday, but we, it's a process. We learned, we got the project, we have to put the scope and fee together, and we, it was, it was still pretty aggressive for us to even get the scope and fee for you for consideration for the briefing meeting on Thursday, get it in the packet, and move forward. So if there is some work that we could do, we can talk about that in our office, but it was really to get SARE started on the, on the full topo survey that was also requested in the RFP. And that's gonna take about a month, and they've, they've got a pretty aggressive schedule just to get the survey done, so that we have enough information to start looking at some grades and potential for other items that we're addressing on the project. So, yeah, any delay, but that's part of the communication that we wanna make sure we're communicating to the council and to staff. If those are delays, that we can make sure that we're all on the same page, I think we'll be fine moving forward.
I just know I saw some July dates that are, yeah, like, right now, so...
And then those milestone dates that we're looking at, that first public meeting in late September, and then another one in December before we roll into a final, you know, project bid or Phase One bid, is gonna be pretty important to get that input. Anything else? Did I miss anything, Tammy?
Nope, we got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the scope and fees with HDR for the core area. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, get rolling, Paul. All right, pay application number one, Tammy?
Yep, this is for the Brandon Park addition.
Take a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay, pay application number one for Brandon Park addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Good. Change order, what's that all about?
This is for the sewer project, and since we're allowing them to change some of those phases, we have to update when those phases need to actually be complete. So this change order just changes some of those dates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the change order for the Main Avenue Interceptor Sewer Project. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Posed? All right, quotes for sub-pump collection lines. Those are all these gig, right? Really, you deal with such fascinating stuff. Man.
I get all of them. It's not sanitary, is it?
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah, I'm recommending that we take the proposal from First Rate Excavate. I dealt with them, and they're doing another project here in town also, and they were quite a bit less than the quote from Metro. 70, Metros came in around 72,000, as opposed to 38,000, so...
So tell me what we're doing there, William.
Up there by Chestnut and Augusta Avenue, we're gonna run a sub-pump line down the boulevard of Chestnut.
of Chestnut on the east side in the right away there, and it's gonna allow them homeowners to connect to that sump pump line, and that's gonna drop it into the storm sewer at that intersection. We're also working with, Tammy's working with the property owners of the fourplexes to the east, and we're gonna run a sump pump line from the east back down to the west into that same box. That'll take some more, uh, sump pump lines off of that. There's one house, or one fourplex, or two fourplexes over there, got a little bit of a drainage issue anyways because the, they're so close, the roofs all drain and it's kinda sitting right in the middle, so. And they're gonna be responsible for that part of it, and they said they would actually participate in the cost of the one coming from, the one I have listed as Augusta east of Chestnut, the 24,000, 983. They, they had, uh, made a verbal agreement with us, and Tammy's working on the written part of it, so they can participate in the cost of that, so.
Well, where's that water been going now?
Right on the sidewalks, the streets. And we can't have that in the winter time. That's part of the problem we had up there by Rochelle in spring. As long as the council approves these and I make sure I can find enough money, I'm gonna try and get the one on spring done too, but, uh, that one might be a little tougher. Might have to take that out in the street instead of down the right away because there's trees and gas mains and everything right in the way, so.
So they're, they're pumping pretty often up over there?
Yep, I was at the corner of Augusta and Chestnut on the west side today, on the north side. The property owner's sump pump must have pumped about 15 times in about 20 minutes. Only pumps for a couple minutes, but it, it's pumping directly into the storm sewer, so. He was one of them that had an issue with it a couple years ago, so.
Okay. So we need a motion?
Correct. I move to approve. The votes drawn on First Rate? Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, thanks Riley, to approve the quote from First Rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Oh, spending some more money, Tammy. Man.
This, this is the first pay application for the Water Main Looping Project. They're working on Redwood right now, and then they'll be moving over to Aspen.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay application number one for Redwood, Aspen, Water Main Looping Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, we've got another wage adjustment.
From Mark Schmeling, the pain is working for the Corps Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Mark Schmeling. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. I think that's done, uh, we're ready for our report? Okay, we're ready for our report, Del.
Push the talk. Am I, am I talking now? So if you come and push the button, then I have to stop, correct? Well, thanks for the opportunity to, to be here tonight. We're here to provide an update on, on the Brandon Source Water Study, and I need you to know that we're nearing completion on this. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow night with the Water Development Committee. That will have a presentation added that's in much more detail than what you'll see here tonight. I was instructed by Bran, uh, Brian to keep it between 15 and 20 minutes. I'll do my best to do that. And in, in doing that, we'll be hitting the high points of the, the study. Getting from what we started with to where we are now, and that has to do with some recommendations and some opportunities for you to pursue relative to future water sources. Our approach had several parts to it. One was to establish a basis of planning. It's basically to decide how much water will be needed by the community, and we did this in two increments, 25 years and 50 years into the future. We also reviewed the existing water system in terms of its capability to produce water and also the water quality. We worked with the Water Development Committee a bit to establish some water quality objectives, and they're concerned themselves with the Safe Drinking Water Act and the aesthetic desires and goals of the community. We then explored alternatives for source water, and as you'll see when we get to this in the presentation, we engaged WSP, it was our partner groundwater hydrology group, to look at the aquifers around and understand their capabilities and quality. And in doing that, thought about how that might integrate with the existing system and how sustainable they might be in terms of quantity and quality. Along with that, there were regional water supplies that were contacted to understand what their capabilities might be to provide service to Brandon. From that, we developed alternatives, and this is where it was really great to work with the guy, the folks from the city to understand how this might all come together and had a few meetings with them to look at some interim ideas and then talk with them about some of the issues that we were dealing with, having to do with residuals, disposal, and also permitting and a few other things associated with that. And then, um, sort of integrating those alternatives with directions that the City of Brandon has already taken and to make sure that this all fit together for a future plan. In doing that, there's not only economic considerations, you know, how much does this cost? How, what does it cost to operate it? What does it cost to build it? But there's also non-economic priorities, I would say, that the community might have. And so in considering those, we engaged the Water Development Committee and the city staff and a couple of you from the city council on a KT analysis. It's basically a decision-making tool to help understand what the issues might be and which of the alternatives scored well or didn't score so well relative to those issues, and you'll see that. And then finally, and this is where we're at right now, we're trying to understand how these can be implemented and develop some ideas on what the impacts on rates might be. We're gonna move through some of these slides pretty quickly because you likely have seen them before in your work with the community. We assumed that the planning area is that which was outlined in the 2025 comprehensive water pla, comprehensive plan for the City of Brandon. So the yellow that you can see there basically is outlining the, the residential extent at that time. And so, um, in, in looking at water resources, we need to sort of program of what part of that planning area would be engaged in 2045 and in 2070 and determine that, based on our population estimate, that by 2070, that yellow area would be pretty much populated if the population trends and the population density came out according to what the plan, the comprehensive plan looked at. We also did a population estimate. We looked at several alternatives or options for estimating population. In a nutshell, the brown line at the top showed what might be the optimistic population trend. Uh, the green line at the bottom might be less optimistic, and the blue line in the middle is the one that we adopted for this. And at 2045, on the blue line, you'd be at about 16,000, and on 2070, about 23,000 people. Estimating population that many years into the future is quite a, I guess I would say, a task to be accurate. One of the things we always encourage communities to do is revisit these population trends at appropriate times, every five or 10 years. And with a community growing like Brandon can grow, the more frequently you do that, the more often you can check into your plan, especially for water development, and understand whether or not you're staying on track relative to what you're estimating the growth to be. If you take that population and go into what the water demand might be associated with that, I show two groups of trends here. The blue ones on the bottom, uh, show the average day demand, and the brownish ones on the top show the maximum day demand. And each of those has a pair. The lower of the pair would be the maximum production of the water system, uh, sorry, of the water sources required if reverse osmosis was not used as a treatment alternative. And the darker blue, which is the higher one, would be the annual production or the average day demand if reverse osmosis was used to produce water. And you'll see what that means here when we talk about treatment associated with the sources. It turns out that when you use reverse osmosis, that some of the water that is run through the system is discharged as a concentrate. The minerals, the elements that you reject by reverse osmosis are disposed, and so that results in a waste of about, I would say, 25% of the water that you put onto an RO machine. If you have an RO machine in your house, uh, your waste rate is much higher than that. You improve the efficiency by a design when you put these in a municipal system. For the maximum day demand, you can see the effect of that RO, if RO is a choice that is chosen on what the water source requirements would be. So if you look out at the maximum day in 2070, about 5.2 MGD water source requirement if RO is not used, and about 6.2 MGD if RO is used on the maximum day. And you can see on the average day about 2.1 of water requirement, and then on the average day in 2070, and about 2.5 max, sorry, on average day in 2070 with RO. Just a short review of the existing system, and you're really familiar with this, if you've lived in this community. There's a water treatment plant down here by the park. It basically has two wells right now that supply water to it. Well number six is near the bottom of the plot there or the picture, and then well number one is adjacent to the water treatment plant. Brandon's been working on well number eight, uh, which is just to the north of well number six, and also working on well number nine. Started some exploration for that. In addition to that, you have well number three, which is located of, you know, just, uh, on the east side, I guess, of the north-south drag. What do you call that street? That's it, yep. So anyway, uh, there's a well there, uh, that is in the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. It actually has pretty good water, has iron and manganese in it, but radionuclides below the limit. And during emergencies, that well pumps directly into the system with a little bit of treatment for chlorination and so, and so forth. And then you also have well number seven, located to the south there, it's the red dot. That well has been drilled, it's got a well pump, a wellhouse, it's connected to the system, and it's just awaiting a decision to turn on essentially. Okay. And this is where we worked with the committee a bit to establish treated water quality goals. The city doesn't have any choice as to whether or not to comply with the primary drinking water standards. As a public water supply, you are required to do that. The list of rules and regulations that you see there are a part of the list that the City of Brandon needs to abide by, and we're not gonna go into each of those. Might highlight a couple. Those that require periodic sampling include the revised total coliform rule, the lead and copper rule, you have, I wouldn't say a variance, but an alternate compliance schedule for that. And then radionuclides have been, uh, I guess have risen up to the public attention here in, in town. The City of Brandon's current water sources and supply meets all these regulations, and you would want to continue to meet those regulations in the future. There are aesthetic parameter goals. The water supplies have iron and manganese, and the treatment plant currently removes iron and manganese using a oxidation and filtration process. I guess there's a little bit of absorption there as well. And that process also has the capability to remove radium. And then, and so that was, I guess I'd say, suggested by the committee to be a continued goal. And then finally, um, hardness is pretty high in this water. It's almost 400 milligrams per liters calcium carbonate. And relative to your neighbors, you're about twice as hard compared to Minnehaha Community or the City of Sioux Falls. And so the committee suggested that if it was feasible and cost-effective, that it would be a good idea to consider removing hardness, at least to achieve concentration similar to the neighbors. And so what is that? Here's Brandon as compared with Sioux Falls, Minnehaha Community, and Lewis and Clark. Brandon, you can see the hardness there is about 390, whereas the hardness of the other ones are right around 200. Brandon does have a, a little bit sul, a lower sulfate than the City of Sioux Falls and Lewis and Clark, but a person who would be drinking this water and is used to it wouldn't notice that at all. There's a little pH difference, and that is because those other systems soften their water using lime softening, and that results in a treated water that has an elevated pH. Also, Brandon's total dissolved solids is just a touch higher than the neighboring ones as well. So the one that really is, is substantively different is, is the hardness. Oh, the alkalinity is also different, and then the major difference there is because they do lime soften their water, and that removes most of the alkalinity. I would suggest that alkalinity is a good thing. It helps buffer the pH, keeps it resistant to pH swings in the distribution system, and that helps with corrosion control. Okay, we then looked at source alternatives. And from the WSP report, found that the Big Sioux Aquifer and Split Rock Creek Aquifer have additional water available for development. They estimated the Split Rock Creek Aquifer could support up to 750 gallons per minute of annual yield, meaning that if you ran 750 gallons per minute for an entire year, uh, they could support that. And about six wells in the area they identified, including the existing well number one and well number nine, which is proposed for Brandon, so it'd be four additional new wells could be, um, used to support that aquifer yield. They also identified locations for those wells, and, and this was really an approximate location. We needed an approximate location in order to develop cost estimates for the length of pipe to serve the well to the treatment plant. And then for a Split Rock Creek Aquifer, a similar kind of thing, it's a much more fertile aquifer, it's deeper, has a lot higher yield, and they estimated that aquifer could support up to 5,600 gallons per minute annual yield. And that would be from five wells. There are already three wells in that aquifer. There's well six, which will be accompanied by well eight. That's to be considered sister wells, if you wanna call it that, where one is a redundant well to another. Well seven is already installed. Uh, well three is already installed, and so they're saying that aquifer could support two more wells with fairly high productivity. So from that, it was determined that groundwater resources are available to meet that 2070 demand. And so that becomes, uh, an alternative to consider. The second part was to look at regional water supplies, and so we reached out with the City of Brandon staff to Minnehaha Community, to the City of Sioux Falls, and also to Lewis and Clark Regional Water System. Had meetings with those folks, and, uh, the outcome of those meetings, we'll just discuss here briefly. Minnehaha Community offered a short-term option, and we'll explore this in detail, but they would be able to provide water to the City of, of Brandon up to five years, after which they felt that the demands of their existing system would preclude them from offering water to Brandon after that. The City of Sioux Falls did not offer an option to supply water to Brandon. And their, one of their main issues of uncertainty that they have in front of them or facing them is a contamination of, uh, some of the wells in their aquifer. And that contamination has resulted in their being unable to use roughly 27 to 30% of their, uh, well capacity. And so they're concerned about that, and until they see that resolved, have difficulty opening the door to additional customers. And then finally, Lewis and Clark Regional Water System, uh, they, of course, as you know, have members that are currently in Lewis and Clark system, including the City of Sioux Falls and the, the Minnehaha Community Water Company. And, uh, the members should, uh, have currently allocated the additional capacity of that system out to 2060. But they're already starting to consider what happens next for serving the water needs of southeastern South Dakota. And so as a result of that, they've started their first meeting on what they're coining Lewis and Clark Two. And although their initial feel is that the current members will be a part of Lewis and Clark Two, that those members can that those members can reach out to additional customers and enable folks who are not receiving water from Lewis and Clark II or folks who would need more water to participate by being a customer of an existing member. In the end, Troy Larson, who's the executive director of Lewis and Clark, said that he would be inviting Brandon to meetings where the future Lewis and Clark II would be considered. And we strongly recommend that, just to increase your exposure to additional portfolio of water. You know, again, we're looking at a plan out to 2070 and trying to estimate what the population might be. And who knows what might happen to population growth between now and then. And what we know is that water is extremely important to be able to serve population growth. So, given the Minnehaha Community offer, which we viewed as a short-term offer, we developed some offers, alternatives that would compete against that for Brandon's attention, if you want to call it that. And so we developed four alternatives to compete against alternative one, which is to purchase water from Minnehaha Community. Several of these alternatives are items that Brandon either has considered or are considering to expand your water sources. And so one is simply to pipe well three to the head of the water treatment plant for additional treatment. One would be to utilize well seven. You know, the infrastructure's in place. Go ahead and use that. See how that cost compares with Minnehaha Community. Another alternative is to use that well seven, but treat it for a radium removal at that source. And so we'll talk about what that means. And then alternative number five is to construct and connect well nine to the treatment plant. And you're thinking, yeah, we're already looking at well nine. Well, the question would be, how does that compare against the cost of connecting to Minnehaha Community in terms of the resource and what you would gain from that? So we felt it important for Brandon to have these benchmarks against which to compare this offer from Minnehaha Community for a short-term water supply. In doing that, we had to estimate what the demand would be. And so there you can see the maximum, estimated maximum day demand. We're probably a little bit optimistic in terms of 2018, looking at about 2.5 million gallons per day, but are thinking that if Brandon had the water and perhaps didn't utilize water management or conservation management, that perhaps the demand might reach 2.5. And if you look at just population growth, the demand might be to 2.7 in 2024. So we're looking at this five-year window of opportunity with Minnehaha Community and just wondering, well, what are these other alternatives looking like? The water treatment plant production rate is 2,000 gallons per minute. That's its design flow rate. Early on, I think it was operated briefly at that, just to test it out. But recently, because of the fact that there's not enough raw water in the two wells that are currently in operation, to run it at that demand, it runs at something less than 2,000 gallons per minute. If you look at the design and the hydraulics, et cetera, it should be capable of producing that at an instantaneous rate. Ron, I quickly just go through these alternatives to show you what they look like on a map. The first alternative is to purchase water from Minnehaha Community. They have indicated that they can supply roughly a quarter of a million gallon per day, 250,000 gallons per day. And if you blend that in with the city of Brandon's water on the maximum day where there's about 18 hours of production from the treatment plant, that would be about 230 gallons a minute. And that would have a five-year duration. To make this happen, there would be, you can see the green dot right here represents the treatment plant. And that needs to be connected to a Minnehaha Community pipeline, which is this black line going up and down Sioux. They had anticipated serving that line from the water tower that they own on the north side of Sioux by the industrial park. And so in order to do that, they would need a meter house there. And in addition to that, would need to add some pressure management systems and valves in their system. So they have some costs associated with providing water and controlling the flow. The approach would be to blend that water with treated water from the city water plant. So in essence, you gain about 230 gallons a minute on the max day. The cost that they offered was $2,000, $2 per 1,000 gallons, and it would be treated water. So then, those are certainly considerations in looking at the economics of this. Alternative number two is simply, well, not simply, is to connect well three to the water treatment plant. And just to do the cost analysis, we had to assume a route. There are several routes this could take. This is one that was assumed, where the route comes down, goes along the road there to connect up with the header that currently exists for well number seven. And in the early stages, those two wells could share that header. The capacity of that well currently is about 650 gallons a minute. Use the existing wellhouse, put in some new facilities to be able to regulate the flow. And of course, the header piping, which is the red line that's there. That would enable the treatment plant to operate at its maximum flow. It currently operates in that 1,600 to 1,800 gallon per minute range. And this would provide additional water to let it run up to its maximum flow. And once that infrastructure's in place, it would enable that to be used beyond five years. So you're not just thinking of, gee, we're putting this in for now. You're putting it in for the future as well. Alternative number three is simply to utilize well seven. It's in place. It has a capacity, instantaneous capacity of about 1,200 gallons per minute. Could use the existing facilities and infrastructure. I think there are some minor hydraulic improvements that are made. They're being designed as a part of the well number eight improvements. And so that would be a part of the facilities that would be used to run this. The existing well has water rights available. There's really no concerns from that perspective. There would be additional HMO chemical costs for radionuclides. There's, are radionuclides in this well. And so it's just a matter of volume rather than a change in concentration. And then finally, like I mentioned, you'd have infrastructure for years beyond when the five-year time period is over. I need to back up. Well number seven does have higher radionuclides. I got, in my mind, exchanged with well number three. So let's step back a second here. Well number seven does have higher radionuclides than the other wells that you have. Well number six ranges between 6 and 8 picocaries per liter. Well number seven is in the 20 range, picocaries per liter. The treatment process, the HMO treatment process, can be adopted, or I guess adjusted, to be able to remove those additional radionuclides. But there's an increased cost associated with that. Okay, alternative four is to utilize well seven, but to add at that well, a radionuclide treatment system. So there's a company named WRT that makes treatment facilities that are targeting radionuclides. And they have utilized this in many communities in the upper Midwest where radionuclides are an issue. They're simply a vessel in which there is an exchange media that absorbs the radionuclide. There's a time when the exchange media is exhausted, and so it needs to be changed out. So they will come as a part of their contract with the city, change out the media, replace it with new media. And that would be then making it so that it can be used to treat water. So these folks develop a long-term contract with communities for the maintenance of the system. And the maintenance is essentially taking the exhausted radionuclide media, removal media, and disposing of it. Then there's also the capital cost of this equipment. So this is what it might look like. So that would be installed right at well number seven. And adjacent, there's room behind the existing building to put this in place. The water would run from well number seven through this system and then to the treatment plant to be further treated for iron and manganese removal. But the treatment plant would essentially be receiving water with very low radionuclides. Initially, in the life of it, would be zero. It would never be above the MCL coming from this treatment process. Once this infrastructure's in place, it could be used beyond five years, as long as you're maintaining it and continuing with the contract for radionuclide removal. The final option is to engage well nine. I've already started the exploration process for that. There's holes in place. I think there's some testing to be done later on, rallies at next month.
Centennial.
Okay. Yep, and that testing is going to be to understand its hydraulic capacity as well as water quality. And so since that's already in play, we don't know what its capacity might be. But to finish it after understanding what that might be, we can guess at that capacity, assume that it's going to add capacity to the existing two wells and have that as an alternative. So there's capital costs and operation and maintenance costs associated with this. And so we've done that estimate, just to simplify this for this evening's presentation. You can see on the right-hand side, the water cost per 1,000 gallons after each of these has been combined with the existing system. So this is an estimated cost of water. It's not necessarily the estimated water bill rate. It's the estimated cost of water to the city utilizing these. And it includes labor, as well as maintenance and chemicals and power and so forth, to run the existing system with the addition of these increments. So if you look, there's some ranges here. The existing system is about $2.70 some cents per 1,000 gallons, according to our estimates. And then for purchasing Minnehaha Community, you're at about $3.25. To connect wells two, sorry, alternatives two, three, and five are about the same price. To connect well three, to utilize well seven, to finish well nine, it's estimated that the costs to improve those, in addition to the additional operating costs, would make those alternatives have about the same price point. Alternative four, which is that additional treatment facility at well number seven, you can see is the highest cost of these alternatives. So when you compare those, and these are the observations, I guess I would say are conclusions in looking at the feasibility of utilizing MCWC, essentially. If you look at that, it's relatively high cost. It ends at five years. It provides treated water. They are a reliable source of 230 gallons per minute on the maximum day. Alternatives two and five, which is connecting well three and well nine, add additional source capacity to the treatment plant, I would say. You already have well three as a source, but you're reluctant to use it just because of the iron and manganese that comes out of there. And so by bringing it to the treatment plant, it gives you the capability to use that as a regular alternative source. And well nine, assuming that develops and works out, becomes another additional source capacity. Alternative three, existing well seven requires HMO optimization for radionuclide removal. So that was recognized as a part of that. And the increased cost of treatment of that water assumed an additional increment of HMO is required to treat that. And then finally, for alternative number four, which is well seven plus WRT, it adds additional low radium water to the system. In other words, the water coming from that treatment facility to the treatment plant would essentially have no radium in it. And so that might be perceived as some to be an advantage, but it's the highest cost of those alternatives. So a recommendation from this to consider, if you're thinking about the Minnehaha Community opportunity, is to, at this point, not pursue it. Because you can take that money that you would be putting into that and expand your existing inventory of water source capacity for essentially less money and still meet the short-term demand that you would be meeting with the Minnehaha Community alternative. And so it really makes sense for Brandon to continue down the pathway. And I guess you might think, well, which of those alternatives should you choose? I think the alternatives will become evident when we consider the long-term alternatives, because those sources are all a part of the long-term alternatives. Am I doing on time? Okay, I'm about halfway through. Okay? Okay, so the long-term alternatives, then, consider those groundwater sources. And we're going to divide them into two numbers of alternatives. Alternative one utilizes additional source water from the Big Sioux that was identified in the WSP report. And that could be up to about 750 gallons a minute continuous on an annual basis. And then supplement that with additional water coming from Split Rock Creek. So you'll see what this looks like when we show the pictures. Alternative two is to not go in the direction of additional wells in the Big Sioux, but simply to go in the direction of Split Rock Creek for more water. There's more available there. The wells are much higher productivity. And so that is a second alternative. In both of these alternatives, additional water is obtained from Split Rock Creek. In alternative two, that becomes the sole focus of additional water supply. Okay, for each of these two alternatives, we've looked at four different treatment alternatives. Okay, we're going to call them options. Treatment option A is to continue on with the treatment processes you're currently utilizing. So those do iron and manganese removal, using HMO for radium removal, and actually helps with manganese removal as well, and build out the treatment plant to meet the demands. And the suggestion is build the first phase of the treatment to meet the maximum day demand at 2045, with the capability to expand the plant as needed to meet the 2070 maximum day demands. It's very common for municipalities to consider phases of treatment and phases of source water supply. Okay, option B is to do that same thing, have, expand the existing treatment plant to meet those demands, but add the WRT radium removal at well number seven, to take that water, remove the radium, bring it to the plant, and still treat that water for iron and manganese removal. And then option C is to continue to use the existing treatment approach, but add reverse osmosis to treat a portion of the water that's been treated by the existing treatment approach for hardness removal. Essentially, reverse osmosis takes out hardness. It takes out dissolved solids. And so a portion of the water that runs through the treatment plant would run through an RO system. And that treated from the RO essentially is pure water. Has a little, small amount of dissolved minerals in it. But that gets blended back into the water that's been treated by the other side of the plant to achieve your desired hardness goal. So if you can think of, let's take this raw water, the treated water that comes to your house that has a certain amount of hardness in it, and you blend that with the distilled water to achieve whatever your target hardness goal is, that's what we're talking about here. Okay? So that's option C. Option D is to do both WRT radium removal at well number seven and then reverse osmosis to achieve your treated water hardness goal. Okay, so those are the four options. And those four options were applied to each of the source alternatives to come up with a total of eight alternatives for future water source slash treatment. As we think about those, this is what that really means. You know, you've got all those words now. What do they really mean to you as you're considering a decision? One would be that as you progress, higher in the alphabet from A to D, the treated water quality is better. It's an increasing degree of treatment. Associated with that will be an increased cost associated with that. The RO options enable the city to adjust the hardness and total dissolved solids to match the neighboring systems. And that was something that was suggested in the Water Development Committee. The RO options would also lower salt consumption for customers that are currently practicing ion exchange. The treated water hardness could be half if you match up with the existing nearby systems. If you match up with those, you'd be lowering your hardness from about 400 to 200. Essentially, would cut the salt consumption in half for homeowners. So, you know, it means different for different homeowners. Some use more softened water, some use less. But practically speaking, if you think of how much you spend for salt, you could feasibly cut that in half with that alternative, the RO option. And then finally, all of these require permitting of sources. And there is a routine that communities will go through with DENR. And there is a routine that communities will go through with DENR to permit additional water sources, and that is well-known. We did a review of the current permits and understood that there is future water rights available. There is adjustments that are needed to those water rights in order to accommodate these. And so a part of moving forward with additional groundwater will include the city engaging DENR in the permission for water rights. Few additional considerations during this process, the team corresponded with the City of Sioux Falls. Currently, the City of Brandon discharges their filter backwash water to the sewer, which of course ends up being transmitted over to the Sioux Falls wastewater treatment facility. The city has an industrial discharge permit by, sorry, an industrial discharge program or industrial pretreatment program that is established by ordinance, and they are looking at the Brandon Water Treatment Plant as an industry. And as a result of that, in some of the solids, in the solids that are being discharged to the city, there is the potential for low amounts of arsenic to exist in that water. There is arsenic in one of the wells. The arsenic in the well is below the Safe Drinking Water Act level, but as you work in treatment, those concentrations get concentrated up to the point where they're concerned about the concentrations of arsenic in that filter backwash waste. And so they essentially have requested that the City of Brandon consider alternatives for discharge of the backwash waste to the sewer. One option to do that is to implement backwash water solids, de-watering, and disposal. And an option that has been pursued initially, I guess I'd say in an early phase, is to de-water that and dispose of it at the Sioux Falls landfill, the regional landfill. And letters have been received, or emails have been received and passed back and forth regarding the requirements for that, and it appears to be feasible. That likely will need to happen regardless of the alternative. Okay? And I would say that we would recommend that additional dialogue happen between the City of Brandon and the City of Sioux Falls to understand the ramifications of that. We'll just, it gets pretty involved, the discussion does, but that needs to be pursued, so that's fully understood. The other thing is that if RO is utilized, the most obvious location to discharge that waste is to the Big Sioux River. That would require a discharge permit as well. Currently, DENR limits radium discharge at the end of pipe to five picolcuries per liter, which is the same as drinking water. And so we talked with them about that and understanding that might cost more for Brandon to treat, to remove, to that radium level in discharging to the Big Sioux River. And so talked through that with them. They discussed the discharge permit application process, it's pretty well-understood. But in order to look at that five picolcurie per liter value, there may be some additional testing required in order to satisfy the requirements of the discharge permit. Finally, if you utilize well seven, in which there is a desire to do, that's wet water. It actually is pretty similar in quality to well number six, except that the radionuclide concentrations are a little higher. The more you utilize that, the more will be the cost of treatment just because of the higher radionuclides. And if the WRT option is chosen, then the cost of utilizing that radium media disposal would be reflected in that. So let's quickly look through these photos so you can see, or these aerials, so you can see what these alternatives look like. I've pretty much described the alternatives in words. To the right-hand side, you'll see a figure that looks the same for all alternative ones, pretty much. The black line is a header that connects additional wells to the treatment plant. So this is well number nine, assuming it comes in successfully would connect to this header. And that header can connect to additional wells. Now you look at these dots and you think, well, where are those dots? These dots were estimated, the location was estimated by WSP to take advantage of the deepest parts of the aquifer, but the exact location is not known. But they were simply utilized to come up with a cost estimate for this alternative. So in order to purchase land, the land needs to be available, to site the well, and actually the locations of the piping to connect to the treatment plant was also assumed, again, to come up with a cost estimate for this alternative. All alternative ones have this black segment in it, the black pipeline with these wells, because all of those alternatives utilize Big Sioux aquifer water. Down to the right-hand side, you see well seven. You also see a future Split Rock Creek well. Again, the location is not set in stone. It is an estimate of a location. It's all going to depend upon acquiring land. And so in this area is the area where WSP said would be a great spot to locate a well. And in order to complete the study, we had to just say, okay, this is the proposed spot. Let's construct the well and the pipeline to it. So basically, that's the infrastructure. Again, for this will be a treatment facility that is, has the same processes that you have in it, expanded out to, sorry, built out to meet the 2045 demand with piping and wells as described there. Alternative B looks just like that. Now remember, alternative B is a little different than alternative A because now we're putting WRT at well number seven. And in this alternative, well number seven is used to supplement the water requirements or the water obtained from the Big Sioux aquifer wells to meet the total demand out there at 2045. And ultimately, an additional well would be needed to meet the future demands. So again, we have four additional wells in the Big Sioux aquifer. These wells are low producers, about 150 to 200 gallons per minute approximately, whereas the Split Rock Creek wells can obtain 1,000 gallons per minute. Alternative C has reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis requires the discharge, and again, we have to assume a discharge to the Big Sioux River, and this was a pathway that was assumed. There's actually shorter pathways, but maybe through neighborhoods and things like that. And so just to have a cost to associate with this, this is the pathway that was assumed. That's really the only difference in how this appears in terms of water sources. There's additional treatment at the treatment plant, including an RO system and so forth, a little, a few chemical feeds associated with that as well. Then finally, alternative D is using the reverse osmosis with its associated discharge pipeline as well as WRT at well number seven. So essentially, this is the highest degree of treatment that could be provided for Brandon's water sources. Alternative two, you don't see the black pipeline up into the City of Brandon here. Now the pipelines all focus down here to the Split Rock Creek area. It's a deeper aquifer. Its deepest part is to the right-hand side of the screen. It actually goes off to where the whiteboard is at, and there's additional possibility for locating wells to the west, sorry, to the east of this location. So here we have, in this case, alternative two A is using the existing treatment process, continuing on with that, and just providing additional water from well number three and well number seven, and ultimately this additional well out here in the Split Rock Creek. It's also assuming well nine comes in and is a part of the water supply inventory. Alternative B, same idea, except that at well number seven, we have the WRT process for radium removal. Alternative C, this is going to need more water because RO is being used. And so because of RO, out at year 2070, you need an additional million gallons per day, about half that much, about a half a million additional gallons per day at year 2045. And so in this case, you can see that the blue pipeline reaches out further east to engage another well in the Split Rock Creek aquifer. Again, this is just a location to be able to do a cost estimate for this well. The exact location is not known at this time. Alternative D is the same as the prior alternative with the addition of radionuclide removal at the well number seven. Now, the assumption for the Split Rock Creek wells is that they are developed using an approach similar to how well number eight is being developed. Where there's an initial investigation, there is a test well put down. It's pretty well-known that the deeper you go in the Split Rock Creek, the higher is the potential for radionuclides. And so for, through careful planning and implementation of additional wells, it's felt that, using that approach like's been used for well number eight, you can minimize the amount of radionuclides and avoid the higher radionuclides like you'd have in well seven. That's the assumption that's being made. It still will have radionuclides in it. All the other wells that are out here at that depth indicate that there's a radionuclide issue in the Split Rock Creek. So those became the alternatives, and I think the last time when Richard was here, he talked with you about the next step in evaluating the alternatives, which was to engage the Water Development Committee, the staff, and some folks from the city council in looking at the non-cost aspects of these. So in the KT analysis, the alternatives that you included in the analysis are ones that meet what we call the musts. And for Brandon, it was determined that these alternatives must provide additional sustainable source capacity to meet short-term or long-term water supply needs, otherwise it's just not worth going after. The second is that it has to be treatable to meet the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements. The third is that it needs to be treatable to meet the iron and manganese secondary standards. And future water sources that would be developed by Brandon need to have those qualities. All those eight alternatives that we talked about have those qualities. Then the committee and the staff looked at some desirable categories of qualities and then objectives under each of those categories. So the brown rows here represent categories of objectives. The first one is stakeholder acceptance. The second is treatment operations. The third is system operations. The fourth is implementation. And under each of those, I guess I'd say, categories of objectives are additional objectives that relate to that category. So under stakeholder acceptance, you see City of Brandon impacts, customer impacts, construction impacts, and public safety. All of those impact stakeholder acceptance of alternative. And you can see under treatment operations, system operations, and implementation, there are objectives as well. These objectives were reviewed by the team, and then we sat down with the Water Development Committee and Brandon staff and AE2S. And each of those three groups, individually, persons in those groups decided what the priorities were, both for the categories and then also for the objectives underneath those categories. So the question a person was faced with was how important is that objective to you? So for example, if you look at the Brandon Water Development Committee, under stakeholder acceptance, they name that one as the one that has the highest priority. And under that, customer impacts had the highest value. Second, City of Brandon impacts. Third, public safety. And fourth, construction impacts. And so the Brandon Water Development Committee each put in their weights for that, and those were all averaged. Brandon staff did the same thing, and they were averaged. AE2S staff did the same thing, and those were averaged to come up with the columns of numbers that you see under each of the weights there. Then each of those three groups, their weights were given equal weight, if you want to call it that, and were simply averaged to come up with the average weight. And then finally, on the right-hand column is the normalized weight, which gives that factor that has the highest weight a factor of 10. So of the brown lines, you see only one 10 on the normalized weight. Then underneath that, in the subcategories of the objectives, you see one objective that has the highest weight. So this simply represents a way to think about how important each of these thoughts are relative to choosing an alternative and come up with a weighting factor that enables the alternatives to be scored. Okay? So that happened after the last time that Richard was here to give this presentation. And then after that, after those average, sorry, normalized weights were developed, and you can see them under this column, then a team, I guess I would call it a focus group, got together. And this is the group that consisted of two folks from the city council, some Brandon staff, and then AE2S folks, and folks from the Water Development Committee. And we all got together and scored the alternatives and essentially gave alternative scores. So let's just take a look at one row here. Let's look at customer impacts, and you can see that alternative D in both cases received the highest score. That's because those impacts were most felt to be weighted heavily on water quality. And so the highest water quality got the best score, and the poorest water quality got the lowest score. You can see that in some cases, whereas alternative D got the highest score, in other alternatives it got lower ones. For example, in maintenance, it got pretty low because there's more stuff to maintain. There's more, the RO system needs maintenance and so forth. And so you can see that in a row, there will be a range of scores depending upon how that alternative was felt to score against other ones on that particular objective. In the end, numbers were created in combination of the score and the weights to come up with a number here that enables you to have a score for that alternative. And then the performance score was simply the score of that alternative divided by the lowest scoring alternative. So you can see that alternative one C had the lowest score. Alternative two B had the highest score. If you divide 9,478 by 8,166, you got 1.16. So that performance score represents how did that alternative score when considering all of these factors? Okay? So against that are costs. And so costs for all these alternatives were developed. And the blue line here represents the annual cost of debt required to implement that alternative. The brown line represents the O&amp;M cost. That O&amp;M cost includes the cost of operating the existing treatment facility plus the additional cost of whatever that alternative was. So you can see that there's a range of scores. Notice that one B and one B2 show up here as well as one D and one D2. These are alternatives that use the WRT technology, and the O&amp;M cost for that technology is dependent on how much you use it. So the operators could choose to use it a lot or choose to use it not so much, depending upon how much they pump well seven. And what we wanted to show was the range of costs that would be associated with using well seven to the max or using well seven to the min. And so that's why you see a difference in those scores. Those costs then are combined with the costs of, sorry, with the scores of the KT analysis. So the KT performance scores are in this row. The cost-performance score is in this row. The cost-performance score ranges from .56 to 1.0, where 1.0 is the highest cost and .56 is the lowest cost. The costs that we're talking about here include the 25-year cost of O&amp;M added to the present value of the improvements needed to implement that objective. So you're essentially looking at a present worth cost comparison for each of these alternatives. You know, you have to build it, and then you have to maintain it, right? You might build something that's really inexpensive but pay a lot of money to maintain, right? You have to be able to include both of those factors together in order to not estimate the cost. So here are some observations from that. The non-cost scores range from 1 to 1.16. And just keep in mind, higher is better. So two B was the highest score, and then two D was second, and then one A, one B, two A, and two C were third. They had essentially the same score. The cost scores range from .56 to 1. In that case, lower is better. To come up with a composite score, you divide the cost score into the non-cost score to get the composite rating. So let's go back and look at the So let's go back and look at these composite ratings. Alternative two A and two B had pretty close to each other, same rating, 1.6 something. And these are assuming low well usage. So in this case, the maintenance costs for the WRT alternatives were less than the maintenance costs for using high amount of water through well seven. So here we are in the comparison using the high amount of water through well seven. Again, two A is the best ranked alternative. One A, the second best ranked. So if you look at this and simply make a decision based upon these numbers, you would say two A is it, because of the fact that it's the highest ranked alternative. But you have to consider that there are some other alternatives available to you that can make a significant water quality improvement, that might be available for not that much more cost, with a lot of benefit associated with it. So that's where it comes down to, well, what's your water bill going to look like? And again, lots of lines on here, but these are an estimated monthly water bill trended out over the next 25 years. And of course, you're thinking, they're all increasing? And I'm saying exactly, because inflation is carrying into the water business just like it carries into every part of your life. So the black line you see at the bottom is simply assuming a base 2.5 inflation rate. And, you know, we see routinely that water community, our water supply systems will raise their rates, at least to keep up with inflation, because all their costs are increasing at the rate of inflation as well. So now you can see that some of these alternatives can be implemented with costs that aren't much greater than the cost of inflation. Other ones have a higher cost associated with it. And if you look back at this diagram, you can see that the costs will reflect that directly. In addition to that, you are considering other improvements to the system. And I know that in the facilities plan, there's a recommendation to build some water towers. And what you need to know is that those costs stack up on top of the costs of these treatment alternatives. So what we show here is a comparison of what the sum of the water treatment and water tower cost might be, as reflected in a water bill, per six thousand gallons of water use per month, compared to what you have right now. The black line is essentially what you have right now. The blue line is the cost of treatment. The dash line on top of the blue line adds the cost of tower top to that. The bars that you see represent the average water rate over the next 25 years. That's not the starting rate. You can see that the starting rate is over here to the left, and depending on which alternative you choose, the rate ramps up higher. These ones at the top represent using WRT and reverse osmosis, and that really inflates the cost because of the extra maintenance cost associated with that. And it's the cost of using well seven to its maximum. But if you get down here in some of these colored lines, you can see that they come together, and there's a choice that needs to be made. So the conclusion from this is, we had to look at this and, based upon the, I guess, the direction of the Water Development Committee and experience in looking at this, you know, what does this really mean for Brandon, and what kind of recommendation would we provide? There's two slides left, okay? One would be that we'd recommend that you go ahead and engage the Split Rock Creek aquifer for a couple of reasons. One is radium can be removed. And the second reason is that aquifer has much more, if you want to call it bang for the buck. The productivity of wells from that aquifer is much greater. It has much more water available. And so it makes sense from a cost-effectiveness standpoint to go in that direction. The Big Sioux aquifer has water, but the yields from those wells, much less. In addition to that, there's potential for nitrate contamination. I think that can be avoided, but still, it's there. And a part of the proposal that we said, that we provided was a two-phased approach using WSP, to first of all, do a conceptual model of where water is and how much can be obtained. And then if you decided to go down that pathway of expanding your water sources in those directions, that they do a more detailed mathematical model of those aquifers or the aquifer of choice, enabling you to have more confidence in the long-term yield. And so that would be a part of that quantitative modeling before design would proceed. We would recommend you choose either alternative two B or two C. Both are going to provide about the same quality of water relative to radium, and provide an additional barrier of treatment beyond what you have right now for radium removal. Two B enables higher use of well seven, and the radium is removed by the WRT process. Two C enables higher use of well seven as well, but uses RO to reject radium. And so you have two different processes located in two different locations, both of which have the capability to do radium removal. However, if you choose two C, you can enable yourself to match the water hardness with neighboring communities. We also would recommend connecting well three to the water treatment plant. From that perspective, that well is just sitting there waiting to be used. It has great water. It just needs iron and manganese removal. Its water currently is below the MCL for radionuclides. And then finally, can you, the pathway toward well nine development, that has good promise, it's in an area that WSP recognizes having the capability, and you're already down that path, likely will have answers on that one in the near future. So in addition to that, we'd encourage you to stay engaged in future regional source options. I know it looks a long ways down the path. You know, they're talking, making plans for 2060. Well, Brandon just goes on. Brandon's not going to go away. You're going to continue to need water, and even the Split Rock Creek source is still, it only has a finite amount of water available. So I'd encourage you, as a community, to continue engaging with the Lewis and Clark folks, and also with the city of Sioux Falls and Mihael community, as potential, being a potential customer of either of those two systems. And then finally, begin development and design of water treatment improvements. Expanding the capacity of the treatment plant, continuing on with iron, manganese, and radium removal, and then making a choice between WRT and well seven or reverse osmosis. If that just is unfeasible in terms of cost, you still need to expand the existing plant. Your existing plant is running, it is basically out of capacity to meet your needs. And so you need to move forward to expand that plant, and you can choose these other treatment alternatives as alternates, if you want to call it that, to achieve better water quality. And then finally, so that's a choice, that additional treatment is a choice. All of those options use the existing process as a base level of treatment. And then finally, consider options for a backwash sludge disposal. As I mentioned before, you need to continue engaging with the city of Sioux Falls on the wastewater side, to understand what the real requirements are there, and then include those requirements in the design of any new treatment facilities. That's really all I have tonight. I know I went more than 20 minutes. I apologize for that. But you got a retired professor in front, and I'm used to 50, and so I think I'm less than that. Anyway, thanks for your time. We will have an expanded version of this presentation tomorrow night, with more tables showing actual cost numbers and so forth. I had to just cut stuff out to make sure that we could, you know, have a reasonably short presentation tonight. So tomorrow night, that presentation would likely be an hour and 15 minutes, hour and a half, with discussion. And the idea is to engage the Water Development Committee in the discussion. Maybe they'll weigh in on a direction they'd like to see the city of Brandon go. I think that's the plan for tomorrow night. Am I correct in that, Brian?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, quickly?
A couple of quick ones. This radium removal process, the WRT, does, do they have like a percentage of radium removal that they kind of advertise, that they see results from?
Yep. So their objective is to meet the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. The way the process works is that initially, it removes radionuclides down to zero. It's sort of like an ion exchange softener, in a way. In your home, you might have an ion exchange software. You can run water through it, and eventually have to regenerate it. At the end of that cycle, if you would measure the hardness, you'd see hardness start to leak through the software. And so typically, you choose to regenerate it before it starts to leak through. The same kind of idea is happening here. It's absorbing the radionuclide on the surface of a media, and that media eventually fills up. And so as time goes on, they're tracking the discharge from it, and when it starts to break through, is when you engage the removal and replacement process.
Which they do all.
Yes, yeah. So a part of the way this company works is they sell the hardware, and then they sell the service on that hardware. Yep.
The last question you had mentioned on one of the slides, the projected numbers are based off of the average water user. What, what number did you use for the average?
Yeah, 6,000 gallons per month. That would be per home or per account. Other questions?
Thank you, Dell. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Sorry it took so long, but hopefully it was worth it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. All right. Any new business to come before the council? Mayor is here now. Do we have dates for the budget meetings?
Not yet. I'll get those, I'll get an email out to probably tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a pos. All right, we are done. Thank you. At 7:45.